Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Before we commence this meeting, I ask that you please either switch off or make silent one of your mobile devices, that is. It was rare sadness to report the death of John Jennings, a leading figure in the regeneration of Durham, during which he was charged with a number of major violations, including the construction of the gala of the year. He was director of environmental services at Durham City Council and spent more than three decades working in local government in Durham. I please ask you to join me in standing for the silent. That is, on time one. Can I please have a moment to go to the minutes of the meeting, on the 7th of July 2019? May I have a second, Chair? Does the council agree the minutes as the correct record? Agree. That moves on to item two, declaration of interest. Does any member wish to share an interest in relation to any act of weakness on the agenda? That moves on to item three. First, this morning, I would like to send a warm welcome to pupils from years four and five, from Deanbank, Very Hill Station, Chiltern and Crews Cross Primary School, who are working towards becoming ambassadors for community change with a approach to a community interest company. The group are working with the ambassadors to help them develop skills, knowledge and motivation for participation. These pupils will not be representatives, but will be the third years who will take back what they have learnt and understood and share with their school. Secondly, do you recall the last meeting, I drew your attention to the page in the headings, which allows councillors and staff to donate charity by their own contributions. Further information about the scheme and how you can support it has been circulated throughout the chamber. Thank you all for your support so far. Finally, members will be aware of the event session taking place on the meeting. I would like now to hand over to Councillor Patson, who would like to say a few words for the bar of the evening. May I have a second, Chair? Chair, may I please have a second, Chair? One question I would like to ask you, it's submitted in advance by Councillor Craig Martin. Councillor Martin, can I invite you to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. From the, considering there is a net of spending of £11 million from the year 1980 out there, which resulted in an increase of EMA reserves by £5.6 million following review of reserves, would the portfolio hold a real cap someone for spending and items identified by members who would need extra funding, such as highways, community centers, twenty mile per hour speed limits, and battle of the top, that is?
Yes, cabinet portfolio, can I present it? May I have a second, Chair? May I have a second, Chair? Can I have your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. From the, considering there is a net of spending of £11 million from the year 1980 out there, which resulted in an increase of EMA reserves by £5.6 million following review of reserves, would the portfolio hold a real cap someone for spending and items identified by members who would need extra funding, such as highways, community centers, twenty mile per hour speed limits, and battle of the top, that is?
Yes, cabinet portfolio, can I present it? May I have a second, Chair? May I have a second, Chair? Can I have your question, please? May I have a second, Chair? May I have a second, Chair? One question I would like to ask you, it's submitted in advance by Councillor Craig Martin. Councillor Martin, can I invite you to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. From the, considering there is a net of spending of £11 million from the year 1980 out there, which resulted in an increase of EMA reserves by £5.6 million following review of reserves, would the portfolio hold a real cap someone for spending and items identified by members who would need extra funding, such as highways, community centers, twenty mile per hour speed limits, and battle of the top, that is?
Yes, cabinet portfolio, can I present it? May I have a second, please?
Thank you, Chair. Can I have a second, Councillor Martin, for his question? The cabinet report that is referred to, mainly sets out to over ten years of reserves that are allocated as part of the clause down of the European camps. And we all understand the importance of the areas identified in the question. We're unsure if all members are more than aware that the financial pressures we are constantly dealing with may reflect that we have had ten years of austerity, and in that time this council has managed its finances very, very well. We've maintained investment in public services despite nearly a year of cost to our grants. Chairman, I'll remind the council that over the last two years, we invested a further £12 million in our children's services whilst the government continues to reduce our funding. And that's why any decisions on the use of the council's budget are merely as part of the council's budget setting process, where all decision groups have the opportunity to set out their proposals prior to the budget phase grade, which will be February next year. I will forward to the budget review taking place through the established transpiring procedures that are in place, so see your answer, Councillor.
Councillor Martin, do you have a question?
Just a comment, that, you know, about financial planning, it's so good for this council, why did such a significant...
Is that a question?
Yeah, yeah, just, why, yeah, why did such a significant surplus of £11 million generated, and why do we suddenly feel the need is spent on PFI costs, economization of schools and capital projects, because that's where this money actually got?
Councillor Debeere?
Chairman, just wanted to move over to the chair, Chairman, you know, that some members may perceive that Councillor Martin is trying to circumvent the budget setting process, or he may be looking for something that he's necessarily for, but I shouldn't possibly comment on that, but let's take stock of where we are here as a council. We may be on different pages politically across this chamber, but I think members, if they're honest with themselves, know every job that we have done with the strategic financial management of our resources as being able to build, and on top of that, ever reducing resources going back to 2010, and I'm sure Councillor Martin didn't want my broken record to take him back to 2010 versus Chamber, deserving numerous times. Chairman, we pride ourselves in our new term financial planning, but let's have a look at your surges that we are facing and what we are doing here. Cast your minds back just a couple of weeks when Sajid Jabbar was at the dispatch box giving out his budget statement, and I said, this is the cabinet, last Wednesday, I'll say it again, it wasn't a budget statement, it was election, boom. And remember the two words what he said in there, and you repeat it about five times, the spending revenue, no spending review, so what he's doing, he's giving us a set of one-offs for 2020 and none further. So how will we plan for the future on a new term financial planning? Let's have a look at some of the areas what we should be dealing with. I think you all remember the fair funding review, I've reported on this over the years, that should have come through if I knew, Chairman, the methodology should have been set, the formula should have been set, and now it's going to be towards us. And the council should be setting out a comprehensive spending review, not a spending revenue, that's being delayed until 2021. The business rate retention, you all remember about that, the pilots that were set, mainly in the, the Tony areas where they were allowed to retain 100% of their rates. That should have been dealt with now, it should have been moved forward, it's now gone from being more doubt to 75%, not 100%, and I think I reported it, if you remember, the budget, business rate retention, Chairman, incorporates the revenue support grant and public health grant, they may use this acroformal, and it's put together by the fire committee for resource allocation, which is probably going to see us take an 18.6 million hit as we move forward, so that's a further reduction on our revenue, Chairman, put back to 2021. And then the shared prosperity fund, this fund will replace the European social investment fund, we're all aware, my, that the benefits will be derived over the years from ADF to ASF. We should have been consulted on this at the back end of last year, we really have been questioned in this government for quite some time, from another body, the EBA, called the Industrial Community Alliance, around three very important areas, and I saw it about in the EBA last week, in the House, where Jay Burney was questioned by all decision members, around the most important, what is the amount currently distributed, and what are the governance arrangements, noncommittal on any of that. And that's why, Chairman, instead of coming forward, trying to use one-offs, figure name which is very important, it is imperative that we come to the view of the budget setting process, Chairman.
One other question I would like to ask you, it's submitted in advance by Councillor Craig Martin. Councillor Martin, can I invite you to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. At the end of the year, we set out assuming the council's net debt, which totaled £66 million at the end of the financial year, compared to the position at the end of 2017 and 2018. The council has borrowed £311 million at year end, which was offset by £204 million worth of investments. The borrowing activity during the year is set out in paragraph 15, with majority of loans being taken out of the public works loan board at competitive interest rates. The report also sets out a forward forum that has been agreed that we undertake for the next three years. The investments are set out from paragraph 26, and these investments are in line with guidance and the investment strategy, which is approved by full council. The national court indicators set out from paragraph 30, that the report ensure that the council's approval limits for external debt have been complied with during financial year. The other couple of special finances set out, ensure the financing required for the year also report a positive position. Chairman, the report sets out a positive position of the council's investment and borrowing activity for last year, 2018 and 2019, and that the trajectory management strategy has been complied with for that financial year, and members are also to know the report.
Do you have any questions on the report? May I ask Councillor to note the report? That moves on to item 10. Order of the change of the reports, may I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. At the end of 2018, SIF has set out guidance on the function and operation of audit committees and local authorities, which up to date is at the 2013 position. Many of the areas that are set out in the SIF guidance are already operated and in practice through the council's audit committee. However, in terms of reference for the committee, you apply the data to their clear, specific purpose, rules and responsibilities that the committee unites. The report sets out the revised terms of reference of the committee's three, which more clearly set out specific rules and responsibilities of the committee in areas of general governance, internal audit and external audit, as well as setting out accountable and proper responsibilities of all the committee. The recommendation is set out in paragraph six.
Can I move over? For the report, please? May I have a second, Chair? Do you have any questions on the report? May I ask Councillor to agree the changes to the audit committee in terms of reference, and delegate authority to the head of legal and democratic services to make the consequential amendments to the constitution? That moves on to item 11. Report of the audit committee from September 2018 to August 2019. In the absence of the chair of the audit committee, I'd like the vice chair of the committee to present the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report covers the audit committee during the period from September 18 to August 19. It is considered good practice for the audit committee to report its work to full council, and I am pleased to present this up to date today. During the year, SIF have put forward best practice for audit committees, which has led to the changes to the committee's terms of reference, which has just been approved. There are three key areas of the committee's work during this period that I would like particularly to draw the attention to. First area is the work of the audit, the internal audit. The audit committee continues to promote and champion the work of the internal audit across the organization. As such, the committee has agreed a revised version of the internal audit strategy charter and the annual internal audit plan proposed by the chief internal auditor and the corporate manager. The committee challenged and supported the work that was proposed and agreed to work on for the coming year. The work completed by the internal audit continues to provide assurance to the committee and that the council's control environment, governance, arrangements and management of its business is sound. The internal audit continues to update the committee on a quarterly basis, the committee provides the appropriate challenge, and a number of officers attended there provide explanation and answers to his questions. Secondly, in July, the committee received the audit completion letters from our external auditors, Mazat, Mazat complete an external audit on the council's financial statements, the pension funds financial statements, and the assessment of the council's value for money arrangements. It is very pleasing to again see an unqualified opinion of both sets of financial statements of both the county council and the pension committee. The work of the officers from finance to achieve an unqualified opinion has been a massive achievement, particularly for the council of this size and complexity. The council's external auditors were very complimentary of the council's efforts in answering the queries and ensuring a timely outcome and an unqualified opinion. I would like to pass on to all of the officers that were involved in the process. Finally, the chief audit, internal auditor and corporate fraud manager continue to update the audit committee on the excellent work being completed in the terms, in terms of proactive counter fraud work. The report demonstrates across the council activity that it's being completed in order to deter fraud from occurring at the outset, and that prevention is indeed better than cure. Because in context, the corporate fraud team in 2018 to 19 completed 418 investigations over a wide range of areas, including blue badge abuse, council tax and business rate reduction plays, overseas insurance plays and housing tenancy, to name a few. Over the year, the team have recovered 1.3 million of public money fraud. As a result, the team has an excellent and local, excellent local and national profile for their work, and they have developed strong partnership with those public sectors, sector organizations, which continue to enhance the reputation that the council has. The increasing profile of the team has led to the, them winning a national award in March 2018 for fighting fraud locally, and has also been nominated for another national award for the excellence in counter fraud. I'm sure you will join in, join the committee in congratulating the team and its assistance in our commitment to continue to fight fraud locally, racially and nationally. And so many, the effectiveness, effectiveness of the audit committee is excellent. We continue to improve, and I am happy to move to the right members.
Do you have any questions on the report? May I ask Councillor to note the report?
May I have a second or a third, please?
Councillor Martin, can I have your question? May I have a second or a third, please? Councillor Martin, can I have your question? 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 Councillor Martin, can I have your question?
Chair, can I assure the council that like the council of constantly, I also have no likelihood of grabbing at anything that happens. Obviously, what is being put forward here is a very good idea, because anything that looks after people who've worked within this council structure must be good. I think there is a bit of challenge here, because actually we are not employees in the normal sense of the word, because there's only one group of people who can appoint us, and that's our electors. There's only one group of people who can sack us, and that's our electors. So I do hope, and I'm sure we'll be looking at other models, that when we consider this, we will consider the very great demands that are placed on the residents in a circumstance where their representation is affected, and it would be necessarily affected by parental leave. So I hope that our policy on parental leave will, will see in what ways their interests can be assisted if they're not in the fortunate position that Councillor Clonce died, Councillor South did, of such a cooperative and supportive setup. But yes, we welcome this.
Councillor Shaw, was?
Thank you, Chair. You're re-elected, you're going to be accessible, and we're accountable to the people out there. We have no contract of employment, and I just want to know where this, where this stands legally, because we have no contract of employment, our contract with the public service, with the public service.
Whilst we don't have a contract of employment for you, we do still have a duty of care towards our councillors, and parental leave policy is consistent with us exercising that duty of care, and any sort of remuneration benefits is dealt with under the number of allowance scheme, which is why there's a recommendation it goes through the ILP, so it is lawful for us to do this.
Is nobody else registered to speak? Councillor Patson, write your reply, please.
Thanks, Chair. Chair, take on both kinds from the members this morning, and I think it's important to note that everybody in our community should be afforded the opportunity to be able to stand as an elected member, and we shouldn't be bad reason pleased, which is exactly why we asked this to the Constitution Working Group, as for offices to actually draft a policy, and we further appear by the consent of this person. Thank you.